Here.
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 I'm sorry, Cindy? We have three items on the agenda this evening. The first one is the Johnson Public Library Annual Report for fiscal year 2022.
Everyone, thanks for having us. Katie Fiala, I'm the Library Board Vice President. Dan Marvin, our president couldn't make it tonight, so I'm here with Eric to do a quick little overview. We've done picture-heavy on our report this year, so if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those as well. So these are four of our new cardholders. This past year, we've really been just getting back into getting people in the library. It's been, you know, a long year before that of our curbside checkouts and our take-home programs, so we're going to kind of highlight our in-building offerings this year. So these are some of our adult programming. So we have a Kenyon Cooking Class, fly fishing workshop, an outdoor concert with a bell and quartet, and these are special one-time events. We also have regular programming for adults, book clubs, ESL programs, and our crafting club. And we've put our numbers here, and you can see them creeping back up for fiscal year 2022. These next ones are some of our special kids programs. So we have recycling time with Metro Waste Authority, Little Lotus Yoga, and then a program with owls from Polk County Conservation. You can also see our numbers here getting back to approximately where they were before our COVID changes, and then we had that huge spike there due to what we were posting on Facebook and the views we were getting during that year. These next couple of slides are some of -- well, I'll talk about these teen programs first, then we'll get to physical changes in our buildings. So August 2021, we enclosed an existing space with floor-to-ceiling glass walls in the library, which is the teen space. It's open weekday afternoons. We have art supplies, laptops, video game systems, and also some books and graphic novels in there. And that space has helped reduce noise issues and behavior issues in the library because it's a special place for those ages to gather, which has worked really well. These photos are a finger knitting activity, our summer anime club, and then we have a Dungeons and Dragons club that meets here as well. And we've also put our attendance numbers approximately the same as fiscal year '21. Our digital offerings are continuing to grow. We have 45,000 eBooks, e-Audiobooks, e-magazines, and there's been a surge in demand for that collection. So in fiscal year '19, our electronic titles made up 8% of our circulation. Fiscal year 2022, they're up to more than 16%. So we're continuing to see that demand be higher than it was before, and so we've dedicated a larger share of our collection budget to those resources. Also, we are purchasing extra copies of the high-demand titles, so our patrons see lower wait times for those titles. This is our shade structure, one of the physical changes to the building. So this is on the west patio, which was not a good space to use before this change structure, just because the sun was always beating down there. Our other exciting sort of outdoor improvement is we secured a grant from Prairie Meadows to extend our Wi-Fi out of the building. So that was a $9,000 grant, and now our Wi-Fi goes to the parking lot in the front, to green space between the library and the barn, and then behind the library to the playground and the shelter. So a good addition in space there. Those are our highlights from our year. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them or direct them to Eric.
Anybody have questions for Katie?
Katie, thank you for your information. It's really wonderful. The quick question has been fiscal '20, we had a lot of virtual visits. I believe that's due to the COVID and all, and then it dropped off '21, '22.
Yes.
Fortunately, most of them, yes.
Yeah.
So is it because we don't have any virtual things, or is that less of virtual thing? Are people not using virtual?
Are we still doing some virtual programming, or is it completely back to our in?
Yeah, we've kind of phased that out. Can you use the mic?
We've kind of phased out our virtual teen and children's programs. We're still doing our ESL classes as hybrid, so those that want to attend virtually can, those that want to attend in person can.
Okay. My question was basically--
I'm sorry, the same with book clubs, our adult book clubs.
Yeah, understand. I'm just trying to understand that due to the virtual nature, there's a lot more people trying to use the library content. There's no more virtual, there's less people, less people coming to the library. So can you still continue to use the virtual programs? Can you still add more virtual programs or not?
Yeah, it's possible. I hesitate to count when you see the chart of the children's programs. I hesitate to count the views, whether it's on our YouTube channel or on Facebook, as equivalent to in-person attendance. Those numbers, as you know, could mean somebody watched 30 seconds of a 20-minute program or something like that, or somebody from a different community who would never attend in person and doesn't, frankly, pay property taxes in Johnston, is watching those programs. So like I said, I hesitate to equate those two things, if that makes sense. There are also, and this is something we had discussions about throughout COVID, what's the value of a virtual storytime in an environment, particularly over COVID, when Michelle Obama is doing storytimes that are accessible from home, or there was just a flood of content like there is currently? What's the value? And to our community, is it worth our staff spending time to make those available when so much else is out there?
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Katie or Eric, one of the slides that, when I was looking at this earlier, that kind of caught my attention, and that is the total circulation. It's gone up since COVID, but we're still about 40,000 less than what we were pre-COVID. Is that pretty consistent with what we're seeing in other libraries? Is it -- do we expect that that will just take care of itself, or what more can we do to get the circulation back up?
My guess is that it's consistent. The State Library does an annual report each year. Those numbers aren't due until the end of next month, and then we'll have a better idea of how we compare it to other comparable libraries. I think particularly at the beginning of FY '22, we still had quite a few people who were hesitant to come into the library in person. We had not ramped up our summer program in the way that we had done it in the past. Last summer, circulating picture books throughout the summer is a huge chunk of our circulation. You know, we have families come in, and unlike adults who might check out one or two books, kids would check out a stack of 15 or 20 picture books. So I think not having those programs going to the extent that they were in the past took a big chunk out of our circulation for last fiscal year. I also think, well, something we've seen recently is our meeting room use is not back to where it was previously, and my guess is some of that is sort of lingering COVID stuff. Some of it is just sort of a change in how people are meeting. You know, people are meeting by Zoom now, and I don't know that that has a huge impact on our circulation. Many of the people who come to our meetings aren't necessarily there to use the library, they're yet to use our rooms, but it could have some effect. So honestly, talking about what's the causation of a decrease in any of these numbers is, a lot of it's speculation, you know? It's hard to say.
Sure, sure.
But yeah, like I said, we'll have a better idea of how we compare to other libraries later this year.
Well, I'm trying to help your numbers. I've been in the library more this last year than I was previously because I retired in December and I have more time to come in. And I've been impressed with the structural changes that you've made in there, as well as the programming. I've taken advantage of that, so we'll continue to watch these numbers and hope they take care of themselves, which I expect they probably will. Does anybody else have any questions?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I would like just a moment to share a couple of comments. I serve as the liaison to the board, and my first comment is the volunteers who serve on that board do an outstanding job. They salivate is probably an understatement over those monthly reports, the financials, the policies, decisions that they help to and get to help influence and kind of oversee. I'm grateful for all the ways that the volunteers help, not only in looking out for the financial interests of the library, but certainly the policy and procedural side, and for presenting even at the last minute. So it's outstanding, and we've got great folks in our community who believe in the great things that this library does, and it's a testament every time I attend one of those meetings. The other thing I'd just like to say is thank you to the staff, because you have endured some pretty tough situations this last year. I agree that not only did you kind of respond to the call of trying to change the facilities to adopt to the teen area, I think that's outstanding for the type of demographic you're trying to attract and already are serving. But I also think with regard to air conditioning being out and having to undergo the HVAC retrofits and repairs, I think that's tough, and it's a tough work environment for folks to have to endure. I know a couple of times you had to close early, but you still tried to make the best of it, and you even tried to communicate in those instances when you had to. I also just love the fact that the bookmobile, the bike is going everywhere in this community. You answer that call even when it's not one of your events, whether it's pedaling to Tara Park for the mayor's bike ride, or whether it's going to Bishop Drum to make sure that those citizens have it. Well done. So thank you very much for all you do to enrich and enlighten and educate and entertain the citizens of Johnston.
I just have a comment too. Sorry, I have to say, I am obsessed with the audiobooks. I never, I have never read so many books so fast as having the audiobooks, because if I'm going outside and working in the garden and pulling weeds or so many things, I'm listening to a book. And I still think that counts, even though I'm not reading it, so. And so I appreciate that you are, you see that growth in that audiobook and that you're serving a need. Thank you.
I just would like to make a quick comment as well. I think one of the whole purposes of libraries is to expose the population to lots of different ideas. And I was at the library today, my son, like a lot of kids, a lot of families who have kids in school, their exposure to libraries because that's where they often go for tutoring, right? Because they've got, you've got all these great spots where you can close the door and all that. And so my son was getting some math tutoring, and so I was like, great, cool, I'll take you, and we'll go spend some time in the library. And they had a display in the back of banned books. And I also noticed that I think you're having a program maybe tomorrow about books that have been banned and trying to do that. And I just want to salute you for that, because I think that, you know, it's, you know, the reason that people want to ban books sometimes is because they don't, they don't want to be, they don't want people to be exposed to controversial ideas. But the purpose of libraries and the purpose of kind of an educated society is to expose themselves to ideas that they may not necessarily initially share, but to open themselves to it. So I really appreciate the fact that, even though I realize it's challenging, right? Because the more you expose yourself to controversial ideas, the more criticism you draw to yourselves. And I'm aware that you've had some contacts from folks who didn't want you to have certain books in the library, and I salute how the library board and library staff has responded to that, and to take it head-on and say, look, we believe that we should expose and let the people decide by letting them be exposed to it and pick and choose. So I just wanted to go on record in saying I think you've really made the right decision by embracing that, and I support that, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Thank you, Eric. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, and that is to discuss the adoption of the updated building code.
Hey, everybody. Adam Mostert, building official, here tonight because we're looking at updating to the 2021 International Building Code, 2021 International Existing Building Code, and the 2021 version of the International Residential Code. With that update, we are also making some changes to Chapter 155, which is the building code, mostly just reorganizing so it flows more easily for the user. It's a little convoluted the way it's put together now. We're trying to separate things out so that it's easier to understand where the amendments are and make it simpler for the end user. So what we're looking for would be to, your blessing to kind of move forward with that process. We've reviewed the 2021 versions of these codes. Having reviewed that, there are changes. There are not a lot of significant changes that will affect the built community in the area. The one major change being at the fire department's behest would be the change to not allow a Type 13 AR sprinkler system for residential apartments. I believe Craig is planning to speak with you guys at the next meeting about that change. I guess if you guys have any questions, anything like that that we could, I could answer for you. Lots of questions.
Adam, I'm looking at the last statement in the staff report about the reasons why we would want to move in this direction. And the one that sticks out to me is keeping up with other jurisdictions, our neighboring jurisdictions, in terms of their updating. Are they kind of, are they, are the other metro communities on the same timeline that they are?
Sure. So currently, the City of Ankeny has adopted the 21 versions of the code. After last legislative session where the state had some implications about a state building code, there was a little bit of a pause as everyone was uncertain. But the last current, the last MIC meeting that we had, which is the metro group, the indication is that everybody is getting ready to, around the same time, adopt the 21s. We all like to kind of make that move, get to it. CICC has also started going through the 21 codes for their recommendations. We expect that we'll see those--
CICC is--
I'm sorry, the Central Iowa Code Consortium.
Okay.
They're the ones that put forth the majority of the amendments that we look for. So we're kind of running on a parallel track with them so we can be ready to adopt for the January 1, trying to stay ahead of that legislative session that's coming up. We don't anticipate there'll be any major changes coming from them. We're trying to run in that, like I say, in that parallel track so we can cover our bases and still be ready to move.
Other questions, comments?
I'd just like to thank Adam for his leadership, not only here in the City of Johnston, but also at the state legislature. Last year, there was a bill that was proposed that would have made all the state building codes a statewide code, and, you know, would have really been a step backwards from not only the work we do here in Johnston, but the Central Iowa Code Consortium, which really is accomplishing what I think the legislature wanted, or it was really, it wasn't a bill that was initiated by legislators, but it came to the legislature. But thanks to the work that people like Adam, they were able to work with legislators and convince them that this, making it a statewide code was really a bad idea. But appreciate, you know, I think it's really great when city staff, I know you've got a busy enough day job the way it is, but, and a lot of other folks too, play a role in your state associations and get active and come down to the Capitol and realize that, that you can have an impact by doing that. So I appreciate all your work that you did on that, and also the work to do to kind of have a consolidated, or not a consolidated, but having a code that is coordinated with other communities.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you for your support on that, too.
Other comments or questions, council?
God, code is fascinating.
Don't make it, don't make it too interesting.
You are the expert, Adam.
I try, but--
Sounds like you have the green light.
Sounds good. With that, I believe we'll try and get it on the agenda for the next council meeting, so we'll see you guys back here.
You're good. Thank you, Adam.
All right, thank you.
Moving right along, the last item on the agenda is a report on the second community noise survey in the Merle Hay Road Gateway area.
Just to remind the council, about a year ago, we had, when Ignite was working on their project, we had some concerned citizens that live in the townhomes there adjacent to Ignite, just north of Ignite, near Crown Point, that was concerned about potential noise that may happen with that facility. And so one of the solutions or ideas we had was to go ahead and do some noise surveying of the area to see where we are today so that we do have something to compare once Ignite is up and operating, you know, what the noise levels might be. Plus, it also helps us as we try to work towards a more robust noise ordinance, and that's something that we're working on as well. So as the staff report indicated, we decided at the time that we were going to do four different, four separate noise surveys over a couple-year period, and tonight I wanted to report on the second survey. We completed the first survey in March, and at that time, all the leaves, you know, there were no leaves on the trees, and so the noise that you got from the area there, a lot of it was freeway noise from I-3580, but also a little bit of noise related to the construction, particularly of the detention pond that was being constructed. Not necessarily the construction of the pond, but we were pumping water out of there. It was during a wet part of the season, so we were pumping water out. And so that was, you know, part of what we heard during our first survey. The second survey, we completed in July, and one of the reasons why we wanted to do it during that timeframe because the trees had leaves on them, and we wanted to see what the differences were between the previous survey and this survey. The third survey we're planning on doing is going to be once Ignite comes out of the ground, and there's walls there, because we feel that may be an impact on the noise that we hear down in that area. And then the final survey will be done while some activities are happening at Ignite. So Cindy has brought, if you could bring that back up, Cindy. So as I talked with TerraCon, TerraCon is the company that we've contracted with to do our noise surveys. And so as we contracted with them, I wanted to be able to compare and ask what is the best way to compare our first survey from the second survey that we did. And so I did provide to the city council, I gave you a copy of the complete survey, but then I gave you the two sheets which summarize what we found out from the first survey to the second survey. And Cindy has up on the screen, this is the results of the second survey that we did. And if you look on the left of that form, it says there's a location number 1, 2, 3, and 4. And what that means is that we have four different devices that are collecting information during those surveys. And so they're all basically along those townhomes, but we wanted to collect in different areas because I think their noise is a little bit different on those different sides. So when you look at the chart there, and probably the best place to look, if you look about halfway across the chart where it says L average, what that is, that's the average noise in decibels that occurred throughout the period. And in each of these periods, we collected information for a week. And so you can see the location 1, it was 46.5 decibels, location 2 was 54.5, 3 was 44.1, and 4 was 35.7. And as I said, probably the best way to compare the two surveys is to take a look at what those average noise levels were from the first survey, which was taken in March. And so you can look at the chart now, and this is the March one. So in March, the first location, the average noise level was 53.5 decibels. Just a reminder, in July, it was 46.5. So that did go down on average on what the noise level was. On the second unit, 55.5 was the March, excuse me, 55.5--
July.
I'm sorry. I'm back. Okay, thank you. Yeah, 54.5 was the April or the March reading, and then 55, 54.5 and 55.5 for the July. And so that really stayed the same. There wasn't any difference there. In March, the third location had a reading of 54.2. In July, it went down to 44.1. So there was some reduction in the noise at that one.
So March was 44.1, and July was 54.2.
Okay.
I'm sorry, blocking it one second.
And-- So you can see what the different measurements there, and I think, I think the-- And the measurements show the minimum standard, the maximum or measurement that we had, and then it also shows the peak. And for some reason, and I don't know why, the peaks in the March timeframe were much higher than the peaks that we experienced during the July timeframe. And you can see that the peak in March, the number one, was 38.6, and in July, it was 89.5. So quite a difference in those. I also, for the council's review, I gave you some examples of what the decibel is for different levels. For example, a refrigerator, and if you look up at the upper left, in a home, a refrigerator runs at about 50 decibels. So you can see a number of things that we can measure here to compare to what the noise levels are. So, you know, for example, you know, we talk about the maximum or the peak one that we had in April, that could be, you know, something as a jet or an airplane taking off, or something along that line. Whereas when you're talking in the 90 range, you know, it could be like a food mixer, or a tractor, or something like that. So you can, you can see how these noise levels are compared to just normal things that you may hear in the home, at work, and during recreation. So that is the comparison. Like I said, this comparison was intended just to be able to, just to, really the main difference was when we took the noise levels without leaves on the trees compared to leaves on the trees. The other thing that we had during the July, we also had quite a bit of construction going on. The Merle Hay Road project was going on, the Loop Road was being constructed, as well as the detention facility. So you would anticipate, due to construction, there would be some noise levels that would be higher just during that period. So anyway, this sort of gives us the baseline of the noise that we have in the area based on the first two surveys that we have done. And the next survey is, again, planned to happen when a building is in place, the building is constructed, which I think, as I talked to the TerraCon folks, that building will be somewhat of a shield from some of the noise that might be coming off the interstate and may impact what the noise levels are. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you have. I'm not an expert on noise, but at least we have some comparison and some baseline that we can use as we continue on this process. So any questions?
Also, any questions for Jim?
I have shared this with the townhome folks. I shared the first survey that we did. I also shared the second survey. And so I want to make sure we're sharing that information, being open with the information that we're collecting.
Have they had any follow-up questions or comments?
They haven't this time, but they did have a couple the last time, and so--
Just in trying to understand how to read the--
Right, right.
Read the information.
And just, I tried in the staff report, as you can see, I tried to highlight some of the activities that were going on, particularly related to construction. And we had our staff, John Smits in particular, was tracking what was going on, so we knew that. And so the first time, there was comments about other activities that were happening that people wanted to make sure we were aware of, and so I made it an effort this time to put that all in the report. And the one thing that was different this time is there was some mowing activity that happened, which didn't happen last time because we were in March. So, but that happened on July 21st date, so.
But Jim, I don't, I'm confused by the maximum number and the peak number.
Mm-hmm.
So because, as I, so I'm, for instance, in the August 1st number, in the, for location number one, the maximum is 81.2, but the peak is 89.5. So can you explain the difference between the maximum and the peak?
Yes. So when they take these noise readings, they basically read for a period of time, and I think they said that this time was like for 10 minutes. So when you look at the minimum, that is a report on, it'd be a 10-minute interval. So that, what noise level were we at for a 10-minute period? And if you look at the report where we have all those up and down-- all those up and down lines, that's, that's reflected. And I think Cindy's going to bring that up here. Go up a little bit higher, Cindy. Keep going. The graphs, there we go. So you can see here, so the blue are the, the minimum, one, the minimum readings, and the green are the maximum readings when you look at this chart. And so there's a, and there's, you can see the dates on the bottom. That's a 24-hour period. So, so they're not just collecting information just at the point of the noise, it's actually a time period. And this, this report was for 10 minutes. So what that means is that the, the average minimum collection that they did was 34.7 decibels for the minimum, and then 81.2 for the maximum. So and that's the green lines that you see there. So in any given period of time, you have minimums where there's less noise and maximum, which where there's more noise. And so they use a time period to do that. Now, when you
So I just want to, so you, in a 10-minute period, in essence, that, so that 34.7 number, is that in essence, an average over that 10-minute period?
Yes, of the minimum, the blue lines.
So then you add up the average of those 10-minute periods, and the lowest average number in that 10-minute period was 34.7.
Right, right.
And then the same on the maximum, but the peak sort of shows that, so the maximum over a 10-minute period averaged out to 81.2, but at one point, it spiked up.
It spiked, right, exactly.
Okay, that's, okay, that's helpful.
And they explained the last time, it could have been a bird that landed on the microphone and chirped.
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
If it's chirping right into the microphone. So there's a lot of reasons.
But that's where the maximum sort of helps you, that's a better assessment because that gives you that averages the, those kind of, but, and so the fact that the maximum numbers, it's sort of strange, because the maximum numbers in the spring are higher than the maximum numbers in July by a fair amount, correct? I mean, you've got like maximum numbers in the 80s in the summer, and then maximum numbers in the spring of in the hundreds.
Yes.
Even though the overall L average is lower in the spring.
Right.
And so that could be because of the lack of leaves on trees, and then the most greater interstate noise type thing potentially, or?
That's, and you know
Is that kind of the theory?
That's the theory, because in talking with the experts, you don't really know exactly what it is. But we know there's a lot of, you know, freeway noise when you're down on the, in that area. And so with the leaves on the trees, that's the, probably the biggest change that's happened. Actually, I mean, it's a little bit surprising because the maxims are lower, yet we had a lot of construction going on during that period of time compared to the, to the March collection. So that, so the theory is that that tree cover created a buffer, not only just for the, sort of the constant noise they have there with, with the freeway or the interstate, but then also some of the construction noise as well.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions for Jim? Well, Jim, I think this is going to be really useful going forward because we are aware that the neighbors in that neighborhood are very concerned about the potential noise that will be coming from Ignite. And so having the data, and we hear Councilman Ready tell us all the time, give me the data, I need the data. We'll have the data to be able to show what's really going on there and be able to make some decisions about what we do, better decisions about what we do based on that data information.
The only thing I would caution about that is, oh, this doesn't compare us to where noise levels are throughout the rest of the city.
No.
So, I mean, I, so that, that would be the one thing that, to me, it would be helpful to be able, I mean, we're sort of collecting data in this one part of the city, and there's other parts of the community that are noisy too. I mean, any, any area of Johnston that is close to the interstate, especially actually, as you go further west, and because the interstate goes up the hill as you go closer to 86th Street. And so the interstate noise is very substantial for folks who live in that, kind of the Green Meadows West area. So I think, I would be, I would be very hesitant to make any decisions until
Just based on the stuff?
Yes, without having some other data across where noise is in the city, so.
I will tell you, as we take a look at working on a noise ordinance, we've got some very good examples. Ankeny has a very good noise ordinance, so does West Des Moines, I believe, Urbandale as well. The interesting thing about Ankeny, that, you know, they've got a couple of entertainment districts, one being the Prairie Trail area. And so they have noise levels sort of neighborhood-wide, I mean, for, you know, which choir areas, but around those areas where there's louder noise, they actually have a different level when they go to compare that. And as we think about our Johnston, is we sort of have a new entertainment center here. The noise in the ordinance may be different for, for this area, and it may be different for the, you know, Ignite area down there. So we've got some good examples that we'll use. And I agree that, you know, we may want to do some additional, as we work on that ordinance, may want to do some additional testing to make sure that we're not starting out with an ordinance that we aren't meeting already, you know, that, that would be something we'll, and, you know, the noise in the interstate is a constant for us. Maybe pick up on the west side, 141 traffic, I don't really know. And then we have Camp Dodge, which creates a different type of noise that other communities may not be dealing with. So.
We certainly have more choppers that fly over Johnston. But not that that's a bad thing, it's just a different thing. So.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, council? Well, we have blown through the three items that we had on the agenda this evening. Jim, is there any other staff comments that we need to cover?
Yes, I'll be happy to go over some things that I wanted to report to the council. First of all, I did send an email to the council earlier today. We received an update from Des Moines Water Works regarding the Central Iowa Water Works and where they are in the effort. As the council may recall, they put out a draft agreement earlier this spring, or probably in the summer, more, I guess, more accurately. And they received comments back from the 13 or 17 communities that are intended to participate, or water service providers that are intended to participate in Central Iowa Water Works. They did receive a lot of feedback. We provided feedback as well. And so they've been sorting through that. And I think the email that you received basically is saying they're meeting every other week right now to try to, to work through or solve some of the, the issues in trying to put an agreement together that can be supported by all the communities that are going to participate in Central Iowa Water Works. They're a little bit behind where they wanted to be. They were hoping actually to have the second version of the agreement out about this time. But there, I guess, the important thing there, that they're working hard, they're listening to what communities have to say, and trying to get that agreement back to, to us for consideration. I would imagine it's probably going to be back to us at the latter part of this year, maybe first part of next year. And it'll be a continual, you know, process, trying to get to what, an agreement that everybody can, can be supportive of. So, but anyway, I gave you the latest information, and certainly will share additional information when that becomes available. A note to the council, September 25th and September 26th, the DOT will be closing the Mile Long Bridge over the, overnight hours from 7:00 PM to 6:30 AM. The official detour is not through Johnston, but we could probably anticipate more traffic coming through Johnston during that period. But, but that'll be on the September 25th and 26th from 7:00 PM to 6:30 AM.
Where are they closing?
Probably some kind of maintenance or testing, I'm not sure. Didn't really say. Does anybody know by any chance? I mean, I think they do this every now and then to, we got to do, check the structural integrity of the bridge and that kind of thing.
Curious.
Wanted to provide to the council an update on the Merle Hay Road project, that Merle Hay Road and 62nd Avenue, the West Loop Road that goes off Johnston Drive and circles around and comes out just south there by the Christensen property, that road's 90% complete. And so they've made, made a lot of progress there. Really, the part that they need to finish up is the, the connection to Merle Hay Road there, right at the, at Johnston Drive and Merle Hay Road. So made a lot of progress. They're actually been using that Loop Road to get access to the businesses there. So, I mean, it's functioning, and they have been using that to make sure the businesses have, have access. The sanitary sewer is completed through that project, and the water main is about 80% complete. And so they are making a lot of progress. There are still, traffic is still one lane in each direction, although they have changed the, the traffic pattern there, and things seem to be flowing as best as it can be expected with the amount of traffic that goes through that area. They would anticipate that they're going to be in this traffic pattern for about three or four more weeks, and then they'll eventually put the traffic all on the east, excuse me, the west side, because then they have to repave the east side of it. And that, the repaving or that part of it should be about three weeks after the, the next configuration. So, you know, we're looking at probably six, seven weeks for the remainder of the construction there.
So first part of November?
I'll let you say that. You know, we tell, I mean, really, the asphalt plants close down around Thanksgiving, so we certainly need to be done by then. You know, we've had very good construction weather this year. And so, yes, they appear to be a little bit ahead of time. But, you know, last year, we had snow, you know, about Easter, Halloween time. So actually, I think the week before Halloween last year. So, so we're not out of the woods yet, but they're certainly making a lot of progress. And just, and I know probably a lot of discussion about, they're not discussion, but just, we all know that we had a tremendous grand opening of the Tressel Bridge last week. And I particularly wanted to note Matt Greiner and John Smits, who were very instrumental in working with Polk County, Polk County Conservation, Des Moines, DOT, I mean, all the, the groups involved with that project. And I've often told people, I mean, with, for intergovernmental project to happen, that was one of the, probably the smoothest efforts I've ever been involved with. I mean, the, you know, of course, it's been three years since the, the bridge was wiped out. But, but we very quickly got on, you know, what the design's going to look like, and what the, what we ended up with, and a lot of cooperation between the three group or the four groups that were involved. And, but the delay really was trying to get the FEMA funding was really part of the process there that delayed most of it. And we got some FEMA funding, not as much as everybody would like, would have liked to have. But, and the other thing, just to let you know that, so we have the lighting that will happen on the bridge, and we have staff that are going to meet with the lighting experts next week to learn how to program the lighting. And it can be done remotely, so we'll be able to, within our computer systems, within our buildings, change the light sets down there. And, and so, but we'll have several staff trained on that, so we can, you know, make sure that that, that all works. But very exciting. I know it's been a long time coming, and I've had a tremendous turnout, probably one of the biggest ribbon-cutting turnouts or grand opening turnouts that I think we've had for about any project. So it was great to see that many people, a lot of people just very interested in getting this one going. So.
Certainly was a lot of excitement about it opening.
Right.
Here at the, at the ribbon cutting, that I, I don't think a week went by that I didn't hear from somebody about, you know, asking the question, when is, when is the bridge going to open? So it, it did, and they were there, and they enjoyed it.
Yeah, that was helpful to have two projects that sort of split up what people were interested in. Now we just have Merle Hay Roads. Everybody's focused on that now.
So what color is it lit this week?
I don't know, is it?
Red?
Yeah, it's probably just the one.
Honor of the Queen, or?
Yeah, come on.
As soon as we know how, learn how to change it, we will.
Red works.
Teresa has some things she wants to mention to the council?
I had a staff comment on, in the agenda as well tonight. And included in your packet was the 2023-24 budget calendar. And I just wanted to make sure that I pointed it out to you and that you saw it in there. I will be sending out micro, Microsoft Outlook invites for the special meetings and for finance director meetings and, and those types of things. So you have them on your calendar. I didn't know if anybody had any particular questions about the calendar this year. The one thing you might notice is that we are going to ask you to hold two council work sessions instead of one, after some discussion amongst the department directors. Some feel that, well, most of us feel, that it's a really long night for all of us, and that we lose attention after so long, and that maybe if we had two nights where maybe one night is public safety, and we do police and fire in one night, and then we can cover the rest of the departments another night, that it won't seem quite so overwhelming to all of us. So I realize that's two nights for you, and I apologize. But we feel it will be better for you in the long run, and hopefully better for us as well. So it's pretty much the same type of schedule, just except for that particular change in there. Department directors meet starting tomorrow regarding the CIP. John takes the CIP to his parks board next week. And we have a lot of things to talk about and a lot of things to prioritize. So we'll be doing that and begin working on the CIP at the same time you'll be doing your strategic planning in October. And so some of that will kind of fall over onto what we're trying to do with the CIP, I guess, as we move forward. So that's the plan. Any questions?
Then you could just go back up to the top, please. Not a big deal, Teresa, but I don't think we're meeting at 10:00 PM for the Public Works Department.
Might be.
I wouldn't be.
Just didn't know that. No. And, and in that particular case, it's Jim and I meeting with Matt. Excuse me. And so you're right, that's 10:00.
And the only question, I, when I saw an earlier draft of this, I did point out a conflict. Did you catch?
I changed that.
Okay.
And moved one of the finance meetings up to 7:00 AM for you. So.
Counsel, any questions or concerns, comments?
Obviously, this is, you know, if something comes up, we'll certainly work through things. But I wanted to kind of get it out there as quick as I could to get it on everybody's calendar.
I see that there's a meeting scheduled for 11:23-22. Is that the day before Thanksgiving?
It is, 8 o'clock in the morning.
Maybe a conflict.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll check with leadership and the family to see.
No problem, no problem. Let me know. One other financial issue that came up today, and I, after discussing it with the fire chief, I asked him to bring the issue to the council tonight because I couldn't give him confident direction on what to do. So, Chief, do you want to come on up and talk about what you learned today? And then we'll see what the council would like us to do.
So as you know, everything is going up in price. Everything is based on supply chain and all that. So a couple of meetings ago, we got permission to start the process to specify the, the new rescue fire engine, which is still two years out. But in the past, like this spring, we secured a contract for a not-to-exceed price for the ladder truck. And even though this is in the next year's CIP, because of the 24, 26, maybe 28 months to get a new fire engine built, we came to you and asked to be able to start the process early. It seems like every few months, prices are going up. The vendor on Friday sent an email and said that the, they've received a 13% increase from Cummins, which is the diesel motor that will go in it. And it was actually a 13 and a half percent price increase. And so the motor for the fire engine will go up $18,329 the first of October. And so they did send us a not-to-exceed contract that if we sign it now, we would save that money. They would actually end up having to eat the difference if we sign the contract. And so normally, we always come to the council with a resolution to approve either the finance director, the fire chief, or whoever to sign the contract. But because this is going to take place, this increase before the next council meeting, was asking direction if the council if the council would feel comfortable allowing me to sign the contract with the resolution on the next council meeting, and then move forward in that direction to save the eighteen thousand. It's going to be one million, not to exceed one million dollars. We had one million, seventy eight thousand is what we had budgeted for in the CIP. So.
Couple of the discussion points, just so you know, and then you guys can ask these questions as well, that the chief and I discussed was, you know, are they going to keep doing this to us? That's a problem to me. Do they want money right now? Is that what they're asking for? Did we get bids for the truck itself anyway? This is part of the consortium of purchasing, you know, like state bid and and things like that. So we we already were doing that part correctly. The part that's that did frighten me a little bit about what the chief told me is that although Altoona Altoona signed a contract.
It was for an ambulance.
For an ambulance.
And then they got a letter stating that because they were so far behind in building ambulances, they were either going to have to pay a large increase to guarantee that their ambulance would still get built, and it was going to delay it another six months. Or if they didn't want to pay the increase, then they would have to just get in line with everybody else and start their whole process over again with a huge increase. So it's not something that we're in favor of. But the goal was to beat the next Pierce increase, which would be roughly a six and a half percent increase on the entire nine hundred and ninety thousand dollar price tag, which would be even more than this. And so we were trying to get that in before November 1. And then we found out this Friday that the motor itself is going to be another thirteen and a half percent increase.
So have we bid this?
It's part of what's called the Houston Galveston Purchasing Consortium. And so it's the same as like a state bid. So we designed the specifications, and there's different models. And the model that we're building is rescue pumper. So this is a much larger and bigger rescue fire engine than the last one we built, which was closer to seven hundred thousand. So that's why the extra money for it. Plus, Pierce has already had two price increases this year.
Who is Pierce?
Pierce is the manufacturer. They're up in Wisconsin, up in Oshkosh. And so.
But they build it to this Houston Galveston standards.
Yes, yes. And they have different models. And as long as you stay within twenty five percent of all the different add ons that they give you, then you get that one fixed price. And the last fire engine that we built, we had pages of different things that we wanted, different colored light bezels and lights and everything else. And we were still less than twelve percent of the different options that they gave us. So it still stayed into that price. That's the advantage of going that way, rather than spending, you know, close to a year specifying every little piece that you want, and then sending out to bids, reading through, you know, several bid sheets from all the different manufacturers, and then having to weigh pluses and minuses for what their options are.
So if we so if we give you the go ahead to do this, it doesn't speed up the spending of the million dollars?
No, the contract is to pay for it when it's delivered.
Right. So we're not this doesn't impact when we pay the money.
No. It'll still come out of the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year CIP. It'll get bonded for then. We're not paying anything early. They do give us options if we want to pay for the chassis early, if we want to pay for half of it down. We we save a few thousand dollars. But the the money we would save is not anywhere close to what the increase is going to be if we don't sign the contract before November 1. And my plan was is we were going to get these specifications, we were going to bring it in a resolution to allow us to sign the contract before November 1. The hiccup was is that they just got a letter saying within 14 days, they're going to receive an increase of thirteen and a half percent on the motor that we're going to put in this fire engine.
So Chief, if we give you the go ahead tonight and pass the resolution after the fact, we will avoid having to pay the increase on the motor?
Yes.
And we will avoid any other increases in the future. But what was Altoona's experience?
It was on an ambulance, and it was a different company. But they were told that because they are selling so many ambulances, they wanted to stop production of basically the custom ambulance and build their standard spec, because then they didn't have to retool or do anything. They could just keep running them down the assembly line. And they were told they either had to pay a much larger charge than what they originally signed their contract for, or they were going to have to basically lose out on their contract and start all over and have to rebid everything and get put even farther behind in the delivery.
So is it fair to say that if we say, go ahead and do this, sign the contract it back to them, that our price is guaranteed without any risk at all?
Yes, Pierce has not done any of that. Now, they've increased prices throughout the year, but the contracts that were signed before the price increase, they're still honoring. So.
Anybody have concerns with what the chief is proposing to do?
I think it makes sense.
I agree with that.
Mayor, I appreciate that. The question I have is, is there anything in the contract? That experience at Altoona sounds like a breach of contract to some extent. Do we have anything, any clauses in that contract? Or has legal been able to look at that?
I don't believe there's any any clauses that would allow them to raise that price after we've signed the contract.
Okay. Is there anything in the contract that would allow them to delay delivery in lieu of raising?
My understanding is that we get put in rotation based on when we sign the contract.
Okay, all right.
And our salesperson is actually a former member of the department. So we get pretty good service from him. Super.
I think you have your your guidance.
Great, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you did manage to take us up to almost seven o'clock. So why don't we, is there anything else real quick, Jim?
I don't believe so.
Why don't we take a quick break, and we'll start promptly at seven o'clock. We are adjourned.